Great. Morning, everybody. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, January 28th. It's 7:30 in the morning. We can see light. And appreciate that. The records show the councils are here except for Jerry Hoffman, who is excused this morning. Is there anybody here with visitor or public comments? I don't see anybody rushing the microphone. Under reports, just to keep council informed that continue moving forward. I serve on the Regional Solutions Advisory Committee meeting at the end of the week. Moving some projects forward in our upper funding through the region. I've been really ably assisted by Mr. Klein, who's helped out, not just myself, but helped out in many different ways with this statewide budget. So, thank you, David. Appreciate that. Council and government's annual meeting is on Wednesday night, and I will be attending that since I do serve on the board of the local council of governments. That's probably about enough that I need to do. Let's go immediately into council liaison reports. And Ms. Marilyn from Winnipeg.
Winnipeg is doing wonderfully. We have lots of new content on the television. If you haven't checked it out recently, please do. It's channel 17, 18, and 99. And our current manager has split so that one is all WU, West Virginia University, one is all Monmouth, and one is all Independence. And one of our own is regularly featured on the Independence Channel, and that would be Nancy Lott.
Yes, we can see you morning, noon, and night. In the middle of the night, I can watch you.
How lovely. So, we're pleased that things are moving the way they should be and look forward to more contact for Winnipeg as we go along. And all of us should be alert to the fact that Rod Phillips may be coming by to interview the city.
Okay. Great. I'm going to defer the mine and report down to the city manager report. Jerry's not here this evening, this morning, but the general manager's here. He'll make a report a little bit later in the evening. So, Mr. Peck, the planning commission.
Well, there's not much to report since the commission hasn't met since the last time I gave a primary court. Though many of the members of the commission did attend our session with the consultant regarding changes that we want, would love to see in the drought of that area. There, there is a planning commission meeting next Monday, February 3rd, and they will be looking at a comprehensive plan in that area. So, if you're interested in that, come down.
Great. Thank you very much. Before we go into the city manager report, I did want to acknowledge in the audience today a city council member from Monmouth, which is shaking the roof here today. A visit.
Thank you so much, Brad.
Great. Let's go to the city manager report. Mr. Klein. Good-looking guy.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councillors, I'm here. Thank you. Good morning. A few things to report on, and I'll try and get through this fairly quickly if I can. So, my forever report on independent station, we are getting up in close with March, however, we will have some further conversation in the executive session on any sort of contact we have with their leadership. So, I'll talk to you about that more in a few minutes. City Hall is now... Good, solid management, somebody, people that can do the work, Chief. And then the personal fit will be kind of... You know, once, it's the same kind of process that you do for the rest of the management where you're looking for that technical fit so you have those panels up to, you know, you achieve that goal. And then when you interview your top, top tier candidates, you're looking for the personality fit more than anything else that people are trying to do, you know, to do the job. Does that make sense? So, more questions on the input process? What's the process? We had, we had the distinct pleasure of meeting mine and I speak, which I can always say to you in our regular session, and listen to a presentation on their forthcoming business plan, and the general manager will talk to you more about that. But the news is nothing but good, and we're really happy to hear it. And I'll get, and I'll sneak out the bottom line in a hurry. It's projected that we will not get any further, any further loans in this period. Absolutely. So, I mean, maybe you'll like the end tunnel starting to come. Good stuff, I think, Joe. We are, you've gotten an email looking for dates. It was like, Karen, most of you already have, and first, we've got to try to set up your following events. By far, you're, we've responded to that. Had the unusual pleasure of sitting through a five-hour session on Saturday night and actually enjoying myself. Chief retired with something special. His part, his official part. Chief Mason, here at Chief, was, as a new guest of it. You know, he had a lot, he put a lot of the effort into it on the Saturday night, and then others go down. It was quite the event, and Chief without filters is something to hold. We'll find out more today how that looks.
Is someone I can record it for?
No, sue name's Phil. That's also a name. Certainly not. Yeah, she's, she's already ahead. They're both still on payroll, but I think Chief is a bit more honest. It was quite, it really was. So, there, to see the tribute from all the police professionals across the state that were chief with yours. So, yeah, we've obviously had one of the best. I don't like that, that's not worked with. So, anyway, it was quite beautiful. Saturday, for family, for those of you who are following on with that, is having another, or having another unity vitality event, their pathway program. So, I think it's still time to get involved if you want to be looking for a way to pay their Saturday. Last Saturday, we got to spend a fair amount of time working on the teaching plan for the chamber. I thought that was actually very productive as well. I think the new leadership, I think, is who are making the difference. I think Natasha is taking over the helm, and I think it's, I don't know, it's showing that they, you know, I think they're looking to be more effective in what they do. I think that's working. Tomorrow night's the cog dinner. If you have your last second desire to do that, otherwise we could, we have all our arrangements, all our reservations in place. Just a reminder for those of you going. February 11th, just wanted to do a final pick. Karen wanted me to do a final pick of those who want to go to marijuana management school over in Marion County. It's an informational event. I didn't know that.
Seven a.m.? Have you been up all night, or?
If nobody else would have gone, I think I would have myself, my calendar too. There you go. So, anyway.
And if you're going to be wanting to carpool from here, how do you know, please?
And another reminder, January 30th, Councilor Schrader's roundtable. And finally, we had a nice visit with Senator Merkley when he was here, and Mayor was our opportunity to talk a lot about, it was two hours, I forgot the second retirement. Basically, the county was one of those.
We spoke extensively, extensively about both tax and municipal bonds, and also we spoke extensively with them about the importance of the county payments the commissioners were not able to attend. And so, a number of the other electives in the room helped Senator Merkley really understand what it really meant, you know, and taking it out of abstract and talking about how the loss of public safety through the county, what it does to cities, and the moral and ethical and fiscal challenges that it makes when something bad happens, when a visitor is somewhere else, and a person in need is on the phone. And we, our people here, hear it, you know. It is a real challenge. I think between Mayor Oberst, myself, David, and others in the room, I think we were able to put a real face on it for the senator. So, it wasn't just a dollars and cents conversation. It was a, here's what's happening in real people terms. And I, I don't think I'm overstating when he, he got it in a different way.
And I think such a, the other thing that we covered, and that was, as many of you maybe well know, there's one of my ex-competitors is out there really doing some false advertising and misputting misinformation out there. So, normally, we don't get heavily involved in promotion of the top comp, you know, my head, because there really isn't all that appropriate for us to be doing. So, we got where 50% are, because it is competitive enterprise. That said, given the lack, the lack of good information out there, we are responding. You'll see things, I don't know if you were doing, done some commercials that are being asked to do so. So, we'll, we'll be reached back on behind these, straightening up the record a little bit, trying to straighten up the record. So, you'll see some more information taken on on those lines. So, that pretty much closes up my report for this morning, unless you have some questions to the manager at the moment. Okay, a little bit forward, and I have the other manager, Mr. Peck. It's your turn, and welcome to council this morning.
Well, thank you, and thank you all very much. It's actually, I was sitting back there thinking, over the years, in my previous life, I've done a lot of these meetings, and I can't, I can honestly say I haven't always enjoyed them. But I, I want to tell you, I thoroughly enjoy these meetings, and I thank you for the opportunity to be here. You know, I actually have a question why I'm here. Doesn't he just always take all the work right now?
I just say a good news.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, council staff, it has been five months, or it'll be five months, at the Super Bowl since I came to these two communities, and my wife and daughter, and my daughter are currently joining with me very much. You know, some days, it seems like, has it only been five months since I've been here? But most days, it seems like, wow, it's only been five months since I've been here. So, some of it seems short, some of it seems long. Recently, in fact, last week, with the help of a business-centric CFO, which we have on contract staff at mine, along with the buy-in, or buy-off, however you want to put it, of my technical staff, my sales staff, my CSR staff, my office management staff, we presented to our board of directors a business, recasted business plan and recasted a set of financials, which addressed those things that I believe I'm here to accomplish with mine. Those things are really four different categories. One is to stabilize the company such that it can just improve and sustain the financial performance to a level whereby the company can build a debt service fund, which I'll call commercial bond debt, that will be fully capable of funding its debt service high requirements on a sign basis without purchase of subsidies from the cities. Secondly, to stabilize the company to sustain and improve mine's financial performance to a level whereby the company can build a debt service fund, which I'll call the municipal loan debt, that will additionally fund the debt service shortfall of the city's default. Stabilize the company to sustain and improve mine's financial performance to a level whereby the company can begin setting targets for building an operating reserve fund and a capital reserve fund. Once mine is sufficiently stabilized, we can begin investigation at due diligence and seeking new opportunities to expand both our existing suite of services, new services, and perhaps even into new markets. So, stability and growth, one fancy word for stability and growth. And we are encouraged that we can actually accomplish this. And I, I am rather rested to make those statements because of past statements similar to that that you've heard. But we are, at mine net, very encouraged that we have done our appropriate homework, analyzed where we are at, cleaned up our operating procedures, so that we have, we have set a course by which, if we follow, we feel we can get this done. So, therefore, we're encouraged. But you know, we can't do it alone. We need help to get all of this done, and we need whoever comes up. The help that we need is in acquiring our rightful customer base. And I would ask everyone, council staff, public, any mine net customer that uses this or that has spoken to, by the one that hears this, to remember why mine net was built in the first place. These two cities were basically told to go pound sand, that they didn't really need current generation technology. Why they chose to tell us that, I guess, is their business, but that's what they told us. We're strong enough individuals, and we said, you know what? That isn't the answer we're going to accept. If you won't do it, you won't give us what everybody else has in Portland, Minneapolis, and Chicago, we'll do it ourselves. How'd we do that? We did it by making every one of our citizens the owner of mine. So, every one of our citizens has a responsible mine net success. So, I'm asking everyone to do this. I was thinking about, you know, when I've asked my kids to do things, I'll say, could you stop doing that for a year? Oh, no, can't, can't stop doing it for a year. Could you stop doing it for six months? Well, probably not six months. Could you stop doing it for a day? Oh, yeah, I could stop that for a day. So, rather than negotiate with you, the staff, people here, the public, I'm going to ask each of you to do one thing for mine. Find us one new customer. Each of you, just one, not 10, not 12, not 30, just one. We'll take care of them, and we'll keep them, and we'll begin pro mining. That's my report for today. Any questions? Anybody?
I just want to add a comment. I've had a chance to visit with mine net staff in the last couple of weeks on a couple of occasions. I'm very encouraged with where they're going. I like the, the energy and the effort, and I really like how you just define the challenge because each time we get to a new customer, it's good for them, it's good for the whole community. Everybody wins.
It is.
Love that. Anybody else? Thank you for coming in this morning.
So, before you, you sit down to dinner tonight, think about, who did you talk to that isn't a mine net customer? Did you ask them? Try us? Don't try us, we'll keep them.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Think we have this, I think it's scheduled to be the next person.
I have to apologize. I promised you the last time that this would be in your packet. Okay? And it's not. I realize this is just very early. I hope that you've had a few minutes in wait to look at it a little bit, but I think really the big highlight for this is I brought in the beginning financial analysis from our audit, and it is quite a bit better than we projected for our budget. There's, I outlined several things from my analysis of what contributed to that. The, I think the big thing is that we really tightened our belts at the, in the last six months of 2013, and our budget this next year is pretty much along the same lines. So, with that, I would, I hope and, and predict that we're going to end up again with a strong financial balance. Our one caveat of that is would be, or exception would be what we've already had to adhere to this, this budget year. Fortunately, we've gotten some really great news that we shouldn't have to do that anymore this year. So, with that, we should be able to recover pretty well from the December debt service Other than that, I think a lot of, a lot of what we see in the improved financials is, again, a better economy, things are not good a lot, but it's improving, it's stabilizing, it's coming around a bit to help us out. That's, that's pretty much all, all I have. I have a few other questions.
Nice number. Anybody have questions? Very straightforward. Thank you very much for a happy report.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move into, because maybe...
In your packet on page two, it's just a, an article that I found while I was cleaning up in my office. You can imagine the number of files that they get through, and again, the people that need to have them. But it was an article that I thought was especially good in explaining why law enforcement or actually all the emergency services are important to the vitality of the community. And, and so, I just asked that you put it in your packet so you could read it, and I hope that you'll be examining our staffing level in the future, the next couple of years. You'll be looking in at, moving to the staffing level of our police department, and I'll, I hope you'll consider back about this article and, and think about the fact that law enforcement is a lot more than just arresting criminals, because it also can make a community more vital, more livable, and, and more inviting to new citizens as well as the people that currently reside here.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for inviting us for us. Okay. Let's keep moving. We don't have any time. So, let's get on to the real thing this morning. In your packet, I think attached is a summarized version of the search facilities plan update that we've been working on for a number of years now. After this meeting, should you have further questions in detail, the whole document is actually much bigger, and it's a little easier to handle. I'd be happy to provide you with a copy if you'd like. We'll give it for you to, to ask for approval, to submit to DQ, the document for approval, for their approval, to allow us to move on with implementation, particularly Phase One, which will involve more steps than we'll be here before you in the future regarding Phase One, which is a spray-up program similar to what Monmouth operates. A little bit of background, you, actually, some of you, or at least half of you, were here back in 2009 when we first brought this document to you. At that time, we were still moving ahead pretty quickly. The recession was starting to really catch up to development in the city and slowing things down. When that became apparent, that our population growth was tapering off, we basically took a moment to step back and revisit the document, which gave us an opportunity to, to delve into a couple of other work tasks in more detail. The economic recession over the last six years has, has really slowed the need for implementation, particularly the first phase, which is our summertime storage capacity. We are now at the point where we do need to move forward with at least that phase, and we have completed our work on the document. I have with me Doug Whitehead, who's an engineer with GHD Engineers. He's come before you, you know, a dozen times or more over the last one year. He's worked on our source system with the Public Works Department myself during that time. As well familiar, we put him out of our system out of the city of Monmouth. And he's got a much more detailed presentation for you, so I don't dwell too much on the details myself. So, I don't dwell too much on the details myself at this point. But I am here to answer, to help you answer technical questions, historic questions if you have, questions regarding how we got to where we are now. I did want to just touch on fiscal impact. Where we're going with Phase One of the sewer facilities plan has been included in Ray Bartlett's presentations to you in the past, and most recently, when he brought the latest sewer water rate increase to you. I think he emphasized and has reported that in the sewer rate increase, he does include the Phase One project as discussed, and we will discuss a little bit more in detail, which is about a four million dollar project. So, he's, he's been planning, the staff is planning on that improvement to get us over the problem at hand, which is summer storage. So, with that, I'm gonna move on with Don. He's got a little presentation for you, and then we're here to answer questions if you have it. And again, if you'd like to see the whole document or mine, for other reasons, just let me know, I can get you a copy. Thank you. Morning, Don, welcome to the council.
Morning, thank you. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Karen has graciously offered to run the, get the computer started for me. But I also have the slides of the PowerPoint that I'd like to hand out to council members and staff, so you can look at it. Some of them, of course, you lose some detail whenever you put it up on a, on a smaller screen. Well, let me start off first by thanking mayor, council members, and staff. I have had the opportunity to work with the city for twenty years now. For the project I worked on was the city street improvement project. And it's continued most of my work, as Mike mentioned, with the wastewater recycling things, but also has included highways of the amphitheater at the park. It has been very satisfying personally and professionally to have that involved and influence the community, reshape itself, dance. On the occasions when I do have a chance to meet with you, I do wanna say thank you. But it's something I appreciate here. The purpose today is to talk about the wastewater system. And, and I can say thank you again for indulging me. This is something I spent quite a bit of time working on. It's not something everyone wants to spend a lot of time discussing, but we're at that point now where we really need to kind of cover some items. The facilities plan is a master planning document. Karen, I may need your help. It's really two documents. What you have before you is the executive summary that's part of your packet, and that's the engineering portion of it. And that's what we will be submitting to DQ. The companion document is the environmental planning document that is required to show that you are advancing an alternative that is environmentally consistent with the goals of the state and federal agencies. That, that document is about seventy percent complete. In order to take it to the final thirty percent, we wanna make sure that we have the technical side of things consistent, and DQ is in agreement with that. But overall, the document takes a look at a twenty percent horizon. It's looking at the entire system, and that is collection, treatment, and disposal. We take a look and we evaluate alternatives, and then we come up with our recommendation. So, today, I wanted to make sure that we update you. As Mike mentioned, the last time I had a chance to meet with you folks was 2009. We have modified the document significantly. The approach hasn't changed that dramatically, but the big change is that we're cognizant of the financial constraints that everybody is operating under right now. And what we're trying to create is an approach that allows us to phase in those improvements in a manner that's affordable and matches your population growth without leaving you at risk for, for violations of your permits. The other thing is, I wanna, wanna make sure and get confirmation that you're ready for us to go ahead and move this to DQ, that's submitting the draft, that review. And most importantly, all of it is by giving you an opportunity to ask questions and hear what we're up to. We don't wanna surprise you, so. Real quick, as a refresher, for those who don't spend a lot of time like I do, we really have, as I mentioned, the system is three components. You collect it, and Independence, we have five pump stations. And you can see that schematic shows those five pump stations on the left. They pump it to the wastewater plant where it's metered, and it's distributed onto the lagoons. Finally, it's chlorinated and discharged to the river. Monmouth and Independence share a discharge in the river. And you have a permit that you share, an NPDS permit. And one characteristic that's very important is that you are not allowed to discharge between the months of June through October. And that's common for lagoon systems because that's when the river flows low and the dilution in the river is, is poor. And I think it's very important because that means that your lagoon system serves as a giant bathtub. And that's one of the big concerns that we're facing right now. If you step back, look at an aerial, you can see that right in the center of those lagoons at the top is where those five pump stations discharge, and then they flow counterclockwise through the lagoon system where they discharge into the chlorine contact chamber. They're chlorinated, they enter the outfall line, which flows out Williams Street to the Monmouth River, and it's joined with the treated and dis- back to the effluent from Monmouth. Step back, one more aerial. I've shown, on the left-hand side, you see kind of a square shape of a diagonal running across at those two lagoon cells. That was nineteen sixty that those two cells were built. That's when this treatment plant was first started, fifty years ago. In the mid-seventies, they added the other two cells to it. So, really, we have a facility that's thirty-five, fifty years old, depending on how you, how you do your arithmetic. And what's happened, and this is something to be very cognizant about, is that the city has grown up around it. We've got residential on the left side or west side. We've got residential on the south side. We've got an airport runway north of the lagoons, just on the final approach to runway three-four. And, and we have industrial land, land just north of the lagoons. So, that, that begins to limit some of the alternatives we have for expansion. Going back even higher, I wanted to give some context of where we fit in with Monmouth because the two communities are really linked in terms of their permit. You'll see on the left side, west, I circled, the green circle is the Monmouth Lagoon System. And then there's the blue line that extends on over to the Monmouth River, passing through the second green circle, which is the Independence Lagoon System. And that blue line, of course, is the outfall that goes to the river. In the bottom left-hand corner, you can see in light green is the, the general area. It's not exact, but the general area of what the F. Bullitt Summertime Spray Irrigation at Monmouth has developed. And they've had that in operation almost fifteen years, very successful. What you'll see on the upper top of it is another bright, green rectangle, and that's where we are proposing to develop the first phase. We have been in discussion with Lafayette Farms, they're interested in it. And it's gonna be natureally beneficial to both parties. We did look at, many times we've looked at the possibility of using the Monmouth system. What we found after a number of iterations is that it's not only the cost, initial cost of development, but the ongoing energy costs are significantly higher for us to go out to the Monmouth facility and do a combined community, move between the two communities. So, we are, we are recommending that we develop a new facility dedicated to Independence. If you'll indulge me for a minute with a little bit of humor. I think analogy, though, has some validity to it. When the lagoons were built in nineteen sixty, this was the technology of the cars, and they were beautiful. And our lagoons are beautiful. If you leave that car out without making improvements, you do end up with a much different-looking car. Now, public work staff have done an excellent job of keeping things up to date. And I would say that they have something that's very functional. It's not necessarily pretty, but it's still doing the job. They've actually done a little bit better than that, I would say. You know, we have something that they do, make some cosmetic improvements. They have done quite a bit of riprapping along this, on the cells to make sure that we don't farm at risk of reaching the lagoons. But the fact is, and this is where I think the analogy is very similar. We have a technology that is sending out pollutants of the tailpipe that are much higher than the technologies that are currently available. That's gonna become increasingly more of a challenge to the city as you grow because we're not gonna be allowed to increase the amount of pollutants to the river. And it's pretty difficult, we use, you know, we need to come up with more efficient technology. And in fact, there are more efficient technologies out there. And I'll get to those in a minute. But I did want to kind of give some perspective on it. It's an old system, and there, this is an opportunity for us to go to something that's very cost-effective and more efficient. How are we doing? If you look at the three components, the collection system's doing very well. If you recall, prior to nineteen ninety-eight, when we did the citywide sewer project, every time we had rainfall event, we had overflow. I mean, it really was, anytime we had anything of measure, we had raw sewage coming out of manholes. That's been eliminated. And that collection system, the pump stations were built, still have a lot of capacity left in them, and we can handle it for the next twenty years. And that's probably what the real concern is. The real concern is in the treatment facility. And we are running out of summer storage. We're beginning to see some concerns with the biological treatment. You know, those little components with the lagoon system, storage and treatment. We also know that the standards at, at the Monmouth River are gonna become more stringent. And finally, recognizing that there may be some changes required at the outfall twenty years from now. So, getting the concentration of pollutants down is due to our advantage on there. So, again, the summary is, the immediate concern twofold. Highest priority is that we're running out of room in that bathtub, you know, for the storing during, from June to October. And the second is, we are starting to see signs that we're pushing to limit the biological treatment capacity. So, what's that mean in terms of the numbers? The remaining capacity for storage in the summer, I would say that you've got about, you're within five percent of the original planned volume. And that means that if you turn that into people, we could accommodate another two-hundred-and-fifty residents, which is gonna happen pretty quick. Right now, we've been in a relatively flat growth pattern. All that takes is a couple of very large apartment complexes, so it's gonna have to go to initial development. Coming up in the future, of course, is when will we run out of that treatment capacity? We've got a little bit more time on that. We're estimating that we got about twelve percent of that treatment capacity left. Turning that into population, what's that number? Turn that into population, that's about another, oh, say, eleven hundred people. Keep that in mind, so this is for the treatment itself. How much can that treat? Eleven hundred people. And if we look at our population projections on this next slide, right now, we're at, in two thousand, so it's two thousand thirteen. I think that's two thousand fourteen because we rolled over one month, but the population's the same. We have eleven hundred onto that, and it looks like sometime in the next five to seven years, if we grow at two-and-a-half percent, we're gonna start to get that, that number. So, Phase One, expanding the lagoons for summer storage is critical. Phase Two is out there, something to be keeping in mind in planning. This assumes a two-and-a-half percent growth. You'll see on the next slide, there's some basis for it. This shows how the population has fluctuated from nineteen seventy until now. On the right side, you see four different graphs. You know, the second one from the bottom with the circles, that's a two-and-a-half percent growth rate. Above that, I think that's a three, and a three-and-a-half percent. Statistically, when we've run that out from nineteen thirty through now, the two-and-a-half percent growth rate matches almost spot-on. It's very consistent growth, but obviously, we have flat times and time traffic growth. Last thing I'll point out, and I won't get into weeds on these numbers, but I did wanna make you aware of it, and then I'll quickly move into what the recommendations are for dollars. If you look in that column that says two thousand thirteen values the top two numbers, zero-point-six-one is what we are averaging in the summer months. Zero-point-six-one million gallons a day, a little more than half a million gallons a day. The flows in the system jump up when we have an extreme rainfall event. We'll see that go fifteen times higher, and right now, we're measuring about eight-point-five million gallons a day. The reason I wanted to point that out is, there's a benefit to having those lagoons because they act as a buffer during those peak events. So, I don't think I see us ever moving away from all of the lagoons, but I think those can be reduced significantly in the next twenty to fifty years to where we still provide that buffer, but we still move toward very efficient technology on what's going on. So, what's required? We need to manage the summer flows, we need to expand the treatment capacity, and we need to go to more efficient technology. So, for management of summer flows, we looked at the, recognizing that that treated effluent is actually, didn't used to be thought of as a source of pollution. It's actually a marketable commodity, and you can use it for agriculture. We have found somebody who said, "I'd love to take it." It's also potential, as you clean it up even more, you can attract some industries. There are some that are very interested in having that clean water with the membrane treatment that you're talking about. Looking down the line, if we're able to develop this and begin to integrate it into your building code and start to use it for irrigation of landscaping and industrial properties, potentially in parks in the future, it means that you can reduce the demand of portable water. Every gallon that you use and recycle is a gallon of water, you don't have to pump and treat. So, there is some double savings, and it's not problematic. And then finally, it does represent a enhancement for the community, for our environment as well as aesthetic. I mentioned before, we looked at the options for that. Was one, purchasing irrigation rights in Monmouth. Another was developing the local irrigation site, which is what we're recommending now. And then another is to begin adopting that as part of your code. The units that have done that, the Forte Pike, they make the recycling water. Right now, we did start initial discussions with Lafayette Farms north of town. And you can see on the bottom, we've got the lagoons just up north of the airport, Lafayette Farms. It's a total of just under five hundred acres. We estimate that would be about two hundred acres to get us to the next twenty years. G. W. Lafayette had expressed an interest in, in as much water as we can provide because of the increased yields that you can see. And it's our recommendation that we go ahead and enter a agreement for all of that. Because I think it's a very robust and consistent improvement. And, and right now, we've got informal agreements, nothing's formalized, but I think all parties are saying to them that that's what we're doing. So, then the, the last thing to look at is, okay, what's happening in Phase- So then the, the last thing to look at is, okay, what's happening in phases two and three when we start to look at treatment alternatives? And this is where we get into the weeds again. With D E Q, we have to show that we've looked at a lot of different alternatives. And we did look at airwaying the lagoons, similar to what Monmouth has done. We looked at activated sludge oxidation digits, which were very popular technologies in the nineteen seventies. And the last two, sequencing batch reactors and membrane bioreactors, the M B Rs. Are technologies that have come out in the last two decades that have allowed us to shrink the footprint and produce tremendously more efficient pollution. Tremendous, tremendous more efficient, I would say, than pollution. Right now, for numbers, we're putting out thirty milligrams per liter. A good M B R plant puts out three milligrams per liter. And as I mentioned before, you're not going to get an increased load to the land rivers. So the solution is to decrease that concentration. Our recommendation, as we grind through the numbers, and you'll see on the next slide, don't get too excited. This is a present worth analysis. This isn't the cost of developing those plants. This is, this is a comparison where we looked at the cost to construct them and operate them for twenty years. Because it doesn't do any good if you build a cheap plant that is way too expensive to operate. And what we, what we see is that the M B R plant and the S P R plant are really very close to the cost of retrofitting the lagoons or their area. And there are some other benefits, particularly given the constraints of our lagoon system to build one of those technologies. Our recommendation is to proceed with alternative number five, the M B R plant. And the least possible build is one of the least cost maintain on firm. And the last caveat I put to that is that those plants, the cost of buying and operating those has been dropping rapidly in the last ten years. And I think that five years, fifteen years, we're likely to see even greater cost decreases. So to summarize it, the recommendation is phase one, build the effluent reuse facilities beginning immediately. And we already have a grant application in front of the C D D G requesting the money to help fund the water recycling plant that D E Q requires. Phase two, as population growth demands it, is to come in with the first phase of an M B R plant and additional treatment. Phase three, looking out there again, as population demands it, which is, we're estimating to be fifteen years out, to come in with additional module of an M B R plant. That's one advantage of this technology is that we brought in modules to match what you need. And again, we've got some dates there. You put them out there based on that two and a half percent population group, it's very flexible. You don't have to go with two million. Phase two, we're estimating at, we said the low end is three million. Could be as high as four million. There are still some question marks there. Phase two, the first phase of building the M B R plant, we're estimating at just under seven million dollars. And then phase three, and I'll show you, I've been talking about these. Here's some, okay, four slides of pictures of the M B R plants to give you a sense of what we have. That's a plant probably very similar to what we would be constructing here in the tenants. That's the one that's abandoned dunes. It's about the same size and treatment capacity as we believe is that phase one. And you can see, even though the picture's kind of fuzzy, it's a much more compact system. Next picture, it's just, you know, it gives you a sense of the fact that they have optimized these. They've put all the mechanical systems and filters that what used to require acres, acres of lagoons is now done very practically. The last slide is something to keep in mind, as I mentioned, the economies of scale as they're spending the time and the money and packing these. This is a package unit that's mounted on a trailer, delivered to the site, set down on a concrete pad. And I think it's very realistic to expect that in five years possibly, but certainly in fifteen years, we're going to be seeing this as the type of solution that will come out. Tremendous savings because we're not building buildings, we're not building tanks. You order these from the factory, they show up, they're delivered. And if you need a quarter billion gallons a day, you buy one unit. If you need half a million, maybe you buy two units. It's going to put engineers out of business. But I guess I, you know, that's, it's, I wanted to at least put it out there because it's one of the tremendous advantages, I think, to looking at this technology in addition to the fact that we're going to be coming up with a much return capital. The industry is embracing it and the cost of coming back. And that last phase, and would be reflected with that, is about a third of what we're saying. As Mike said, and I'll close it off here on this last slide, we have been working closely with Ray Barlow of my economic analysis. And the first phase definitely is within the, we had an increase that Ray had recommended, council adopted, that could happen as an annual increase. If that were to continue, Ray and I talked informally on that. We believe that that actually going to be sufficient to accommodate that second phase of the lagoon. But that's, a lot has to be talked about. So thank you for allowing me to talk voice for her at this time of morning. It's not often I get a captive audience for this, but I hope that's been helpful and I hope if any questions you have.
Questions for representative? So we're expecting, if things go well, that this will be, the irrigation portion will be in place for the summers. Irrigation?
No, I think, I don't think it would be this year probably more practical than would be the following year.
So kind of then for the end of the year.
There's a, there's, there's several pieces that have to fall into place. I would say in our favor, D E Q is very supportive of it. They would like to see us doing something like this. They're supportive of pre-irrigation in general and I think they are aware that we're approaching a end of term.
This, this question is kind of off the top of my head. If we don't start having, have you recall, Pearson, are we going to be facing some problems, maybe an additional one or two or are we discharging?
The lack of rainfall will benefit us for that, that summer we build our project. It has created some problems. I know Ken and Chad have talked to me several times about it because I know there have been odor problems out of the lagoons. And I think those are a direct reflection of the fact that we've had very little flow coming in. And so, yeah, the droughts create unusual circumstances. In contrast, the previous two years, we had more than normal rainfall, which required a burn to release to burn.
I just had to, you didn't mention that when we were talking.
They would be asking, rightfully so, for some compensation for it. So we would be buying into their system. And so we have, we have double bike, that's buy into the system. And then we have the ongoing energy cost basically double twice once the Monmouth, that floods out to the field. Because we look very close at it and I have to compliment and say I appreciate patience, the Monmouth staff, at working through that for us. But at the end of it all, we just did the old best solution.
Do you want to spend a moment and talk about the changing requirements for our field?
What we're thinking right now and what technology we're going with. There's two things that are, that are important in that discussion. One is, when populations of communities exceed ten thousand, just where we're headed, we are put into a whole different set of monitoring regulations. And we will start, we will have to report a number of other constituents, the manholes and then some debate whether we'll have to start to deal with personal care products, pharmaceuticals and some of those things. So that's the first, is that pretty soon, population will put us into a level that will be scrutinized more carefully. The second is that there's a general term, pollutants of emergency concern, that we did monitor or could even measure ten years ago, ten years ago. And that includes pharmaceuticals, C A P, personal care products, that, that there's a greater concern to it. And one of the best ways of tackling that and the potential that those could become part of our permit is to go with the modern technology. And the S P Rs, the M B Rs are effective at reducing those. So the recommendation to go to that is really partly the recognition that this is very, is a big, that will change this merger.
I know from conversations with other municipalities, that even if there is no growth, there is still a rising level of rules that will be followed. Even if there was no growth, there would still be need for improvements in, in the, in systems set with ours. So I think it's important that we know that that, while, while nothing ever stays.
The ordinance like this, we'll talk about that a little bit more. This ordinance therefore drops some of the people that, that we use to be able to check under the old code. Typically, for example, volunteers at the library, the museum, certain volunteers, interns, workers right here in the city. These are the kind of people that, that we would like this ordinance to apply to, as well as the taxi, which is a separate ordinance. So this ordinance, which is twenty dash six, it will allow us through the police department to make these checks and do these checks for city departments who ask us to do them. These checks are available all the time, they're legal forever, but for you to get one done, you have to get the waiver, of course, from the person who's applying. You can always go to the state police and say, oh, pay some money and you can get this, this check done. What LETS has done in the past is allowed cities to do this on their own and, and to save the, the cost of travel, the cost of, of asking for the state license to do it. And so this is really a convenience, as much as anything, for us to be able to do these checks here. In the end, if we do find that a person has a criminal history, all we do is say, yes, there is one, or no, there's not. If we tell the department that, yes, there is a criminal history, then it's sort of up to them to go to state police, get the whole criminal history and determine whether anything in that really has anything to do with the job that's being applied for. So now let me tell you why the attorneys thought we would be best not to have this ordinance. There is a potential liability if you approve the, the ordinance, that we would forget to do this or we would do it randomly. If we did either of those things, there's a certain amount of liability for the city. For example, if we normally do these background checks, but for some reason we didn't on someone, that person then kidnaps a child, maybe while they're working in the library. We have some liability that we've assumed as a city because we have, this ordinance allows us to do it, but we didn't. And so if we don't have the ordinance, unbelievably.